You can have it.
I've got plenty, thank you very much.
Yep. So there's really not- There's really not too much on the agenda, right?
Um, commercial vehicle, meeting schedule, I mean, you see, not a ton, should be quick. Once we decide to raise the roof. And some ladies quitting, I don't know, I don't know what we're gonna do about that.
Yeah, hang her by her heels.
Exactly.
Yep.
Doctor Linda lately?
No, I owe, I owe her a call.
Well, I said I.
We kept missing on Thanksgiving.
Say hi for me, you're a better person than I am.
No problem, she'll be up pretty soon, I think.
Oh, she'll probably come up for a grab.
But I'm not meeting her anywhere.
Well, I don't even think, where would you meet?
Exactly. Exactly, whoo, I'm getting high on this pen.
Gonna borrow it.
Marker. Where's everybody at tonight?
Is it seven or seven thirty? Planning Commission's seven o'clock, right?
Yeah.
I don't know. I'll get here.
Yep, seven PM, December first.
Not everybody's neurotic enough to get here three days early, like we are.
Oh, wow. Writing all my bills.
You missed the final action.
No, I didn't.
You're right, you didn't. It's a terrible day.
Wonder what kind of feedback Oxford's getting from, uh, the Republicans.
No clue. And I mean, it's realistic, Oxford's a Republican town, what are they gonna say?
But who took Oxford, though? Didn't Biden?
You know, I don't know that I ever saw. I don't think I ever saw anything in, I didn't see the leader at all.
I saw the leader, but I don't remember.
I'll stand and repay our respects to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, all right. Uh, Madam Secretary, if you please call the roll.
I certainly will. Um, Helmut?
Yes.
Uh, according to PA two twenty-eight, um-
Yes.
You guys need to state your location, your remotely attend from Oxford, Michigan.
This is Maureen Helmut, and I'm attending, what's the word, Terry?
Remotely.
Remotely from Oxford, Michigan.
Thank you. Is Douglas here?
Uh, Gary is missing.
Okay, McClellan?
Here, attending remotely from Oxford, Michigan.
Um, Ballard?
Uh, here, attending remotely from Oxford, Michigan.
And Bama?
Attending remotely from Oxford, Michigan.
And Pilak is absent. Um, and Mr. Curtis is not, no longer on this, uh, planning commission, he'll be replaced.
All right, excellent, so there is, uh, so there is four of us on. All right, that brings us now to, uh, item number four. Uh, do I have a motion to approve, uh, tonight's agenda dated December first, twenty twenty?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Keep going.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight, December first, twenty twenty.
And I will support that.
Nice job, Michelle. All right, uh, Madam Secretary, please could call the vote for that?
Bama?
Yes.
Douglas? Absent, Helmut?
Yes.
McClellan?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
And Pilak is absent. I think I got everybody.
Excellent, so we, we have an approved agenda for tonight? Uh, now, i- if, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from October twentieth, twenty twenty?
If there's no changes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty, twenty twenty. As to that.
I'll second that motion.
All right, Madam Secretary, if you please, uh, call the, call the vote for that?
Helmut?
Yes.
McClellan?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Bama?
Yes.
Douglas? Absent, and Pilak is absent.
All right, so we have, uh, so we have approved, uh, the approved minutes from October twentieth. Uh, this brings us down now to, uh, correspondence. And, Madam Secretary, the only, uh, correspondence that we received was from our own commissioner, Rose Bama, and her request to-
Her letter of resignation.
Uh, letter of resignation, that's right, sorry, I was looking at the sheet, but yeah, her acceptance for, uh, resignation at the end of her term here on, uh, December thirtieth, twenty, uh, twenty twenty?
I'd like to say I spoke with Rose and tried to talk her out of this, but if she's determined to resign, I'll make a motion to approve Rose's resignation at the end of her term with regret.
Very much so. Do we have a second on that?
I'll support.
Madam, Madam Secretary, if you would please call the, uh, the vote for, uh, the acceptance of Rose Bama's resignation?
Ballard?
Uh, yes.
Helmut?
Yes.
McClellan?
Yes.
Bama?
Yes.
Douglas is absent, and Pilak is absent.
All right, thank you for that, Rose, it's, uh, you know, it, we're really, unfortunately, really gonna miss you on this, you've spent years of dedication of helping to serve on, on community and helping to make it, uh, the, much, much better, so you definitely will be Miss Rose.
Thank you, but shouldn't we excuse Leslie since she sent a letter? She wouldn't be here tonight?
You're right.
Uh, yes, we, we should. So how does that re, how does that get recorded, uh?
It, it's, well, you, probably what you should do is a motion to excuse her absence because she informed you that she was not gonna be here, does not, you don't have to approve her, um, correspondence, but because she, um, let you know in advance, normally the, the council, or the members on the board, one of the members would motion to approve the absence.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion, uh, to approve Leslie Pilak's, uh, absence?
I'll make that a motion.
Out of the board.
All right, we have, we have Bama with a motion and, uh, Helmut with a, with a second. Madam Secretary, if you please call the, call the roll vote for that?
Oh, sure, um, McClellan?
Yes.
Bama?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Helmut?
Yes.
Pilak is absent, and Douglas also absent.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, this brings us now to, uh, to old business, and this is, uh, here to discuss the, uh, the commercial vehicles in the residential area and the proposed amendment changes based on the changes that we, that we made additions to the, the ordinance. Uh, so Mario, if you, you please help us, uh, or play, maybe please start off and kind of discuss a little bit about, uh, the last final changes that you made?
Uh, sure, uh, evening, everyone. Um, so there were some, uh, changes based on your, uh, direction and comments from our last meeting, and then I did add a couple other, um, issues to consider because, as I mentioned, over the course of the year, we've been finding, uh, little tweaks we'd like to make, so they're, they're modest, but, uh, this way we can do them all at once and be efficient about it rather than try and do each one individually. So, going over the first one, which was just about the, um, removing tattoo parlors as a regulated use, uh, we did fi, I did find out that it was just on, um, page one in the table. You know, in your previous version, it was listed as a special use under P one, but that was just a, basically a typo, it actually was under F, under the, uh, F for flex district. So I just scooted that over there, that makes a lot more sense, because as you guys mentioned, it's a little weird to put uses other than parking into the P one district. So that was really the only, only change inside here. Um, the rest of this, um, is, is similar, which, which would remove tattoo parlors because of its broad definition, from a regulated use and place that into, uh, a C two permitted use, so other type of service uses. And then I did go over, um, some of the, uh, other examples of, uh, massage parlor services, and I think because of the paragraph G, because we, we talked about that for a second, because paragraph G does specifically say that professionals that are registered with the state are excluded from this provision. I think that's, uh, usually, I found that to be sufficient in other ordinances and because, as I mentioned, it's for professionals to do, this is intended to address the other type of uses, um, as regulated. So I don't know-
Can I ask a question?
Pause and, kind of questions after each, uh, amendment?
Can I ask a couple questions about those commercial vehicles? I didn't miss that meeting. I'm looking at the pictures, I'm not sure what a couple of the pictures are. Again, page five, um-
Yep. So, uh, go ahead.
I think there's second vehicles. Yes. The, there's a line down separating the light, medium, and the large. Next to that line, there's the seven vehicles that are light, medium duty. The two next to that line, I'm not sure what they are.
That are still under the light, medium duty, uh, example?
Yes, yes.
The one, looks like two of them are, are just, um, uh, trucks that have, uh, a cab and then a different type of chassis next to it, one's just like a, a frame around the, uh, the chassis, and the other is a, uh, van type structure, uh, vehicle that's, uh, taller than a van. So the whole intent was just to show, uh, examples of vehicles that would be acceptable in the, um, um, residential areas, and one thing to keep in mind is that this is just, it's not regulatory in and of itself, meaning it doesn't have, it's not specifically only these vehicles, or it's not specifically ju, um, they have to match this description, it's just to be, um, it's just to demonstrate, so they don't, those don't necessarily, um, will regulate it specifically.
Mario, can you hear me now?
Yeah, Joe.
Okay, 'cause I think that one is a stake rack, the one in the middle along that line, and that's clearly defined in our commercial vehicle definition, uh, as a, you know, a cha, cabin chassis with a stake. And you crossed out rack, but stake rack, body, dump body, dump body, a wrecker body. So you have a flat bed and you have a stake rack, those two, to me, seemed like they might be a little over the line, my first thought when I saw this last month, of what people might find acceptable, um, because stake rack was explicitly listed originally. Or are we just saying it's okay as long as it isn't over nine feet with this new approach?
That's what I was thinking, that it would just be more about the size of the chassis body. Um, and I think that's also why we got rid of the, uh, up- Um, and I think that's also why we got rid of the, uh, up in the definition, we got rid of the reference to anything more than eight inches. So that rather than not worry about whether how high or low it is.
Yeah.
But you know, that's up to you guys. If you, if others feel that these type of vehicles might be, you know, crossing that line. Cause we can always just remove that picture from the example if we wanted to. It depends on what people are feeling.
Yeah. Cause the typical, I mean, I don't know of any normal passenger pickup truck where you get more than eight foot bed. So that's why, once you get beyond that, then you get into a different realm and what your definitions here are saying, we'll even give you up to nine. Um, for something like a, uh, one of those pictured vehicles. Bigger than that, it would hit the definition of a commercial vehicle.
I actually had concerns about if you count them out, one, two, three, four, five, six, number, I don't even know what numbers six and eight are. I just, cause six doesn't look like something I just only want to live next to. But I don't know.
So, so... Go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead.
I just, I used to live next to a contractor. He was a nice guy. Never complained. He had some ugly looking vehicles in his, and he would bring home a dump truck and, and it was fun. He was trying to make a living. But it wasn't a great situation and they were diesel. And I just don't know what those vehicles are.
So, um, so one thing maybe make a comment on, the, the, the truck that's in the bottom right-hand corner, that is a stake truck. The truck that's directly above that is the exact same truck. It just now has sides on it to, uh, to enclose it. It's basically so stuff doesn't fall out of it. That's, that's the difference between those two trucks. Typically, those stake trucks are, are just a, what's, uh, what's considered like a flat bed and it's typically under eight foot long.
Okay.
Yep. So those would be more like, uh, it'd be like, uh, a lot of, sometimes you see a landscaping truck would have that type of, uh, that type of bed on it. On occasion, occasionally you'll see that.
I guess my question becomes, is that something we want? People to be able to drive home from work? I don't know that people drive those home from work.
Uh, I mean, that's, uh, that's, that's what we're here to discuss, right? That's what we're here to, um, to, to talk about. Um, I, me personally, uh, I personally don't see an issue with that. It kind of fits in with the whole, um, realm of truck size. Um, and I think we're, and it still fits within something that, uh, I don't, it's not too large or it shouldn't be in the driveway.
I guess if it's only eight feet, and I'm surprised it's only eight, eight or nine feet, that'd be all right.
It, it would, those are typically under, uh, so typically they're under eight feet. So it would actually fall in below the nine feet, uh, parameters in which not to exceed.
Okay.
That's just my two cents.
I think it was four, but okay.
Justin, this is Joey. Uh, one more thing I'd like to ask Mario and, and that, and you've just touched on it. Uh, but the nine, but the nine feet. So in that commercial vehicle definition, below the part that's, uh, lined out in red, it talks about a motor vehicle, which is commercial license plate and designed to accommodate a body length in excess of nine feet. So something might be designed to have a body more than nine feet. They have an eight or nine foot bed on it. So I think, I don't know if it should be designed to have a body excessive nine feet or just has a body in excess of nine feet. Might be clearer.
Yeah. I mean, that would be, probably a little bit more clear with that, um, that verbiage. Just get rid of that whole design and says.
So, uh, Joe, say that again. What was your, um, what was your?
Well, cause right now it says any truck motor vehicle with a commercial license plate and is designed to accommodate a body length in excess of nine feet. What about if you had a trucker motor vehicle, which has commercial license plate and has a body in a, in excess of nine feet? Cause just, you know, how do we know if someone's designed for a body more than nine feet? It has an eight foot bed on it, but it could have a 12 foot bed on it. I mean, you start splitting hairs then.
Yeah, that language is what's just there and it's existing language, but.
And I didn't even think about it until now.
Sorry, Joe.
Yeah.
No, I'm all for, uh, refining language to make it a little bit more clear and concise.
Motor vehicle, motor vehicle which has a commercial designed to accommodate.
Do we, are we worried about what it's designed for or what it actually has?
I think we'd be more worried about what it actually has.
Yeah.
Right. If you're saying design, it just leaves too much to interpretation and, you know, questions later of what that means.
Yeah. We, it gets the gray area, I guess, and if we mentioned that it had a body length in excess of nine feet, that would be clear.
And a body length. Okay. So, uh, so we can, we, so we're looking at crossing out, um, and...
Right after plate.
Yep.
And a body length in excess of nine feet or or leaving.
Is designed to accommodate, we'll take out.
Yep.
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 So from the commercial definitions, uh, so from the definition right there of a commercial vehicle, does anybody else have any, uh, questions or comments with, uh, what currently has or is there any other, um, verbiage that they don't completely understand or think that it might be, to be changed? Was everybody good with that then, right this minute?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I, um...
Uh, Mo, you said, is, Mo, you said you were, uh, Rose, you said you're okay with everything there?
Yep.
Uh, Michelle? All right. So let's take it down. So, uh, if we, then we'll take it down to any, um, so the purpose. Uh, is there anything within the purpose of commercial vehicles in the residential area, part A? Any, uh, any verbiage in there which, uh, may be confusing? Needs, needs some refinement? Okay. We'll ta- I'll, I'll take the, take the silences. Everything is good there. All right. So, uh, let's take it down to maybe section B, the residential parking prohibited. Um, so we're adding the no large commercial vehicles and we're taking out of any kind. Not apply to standard vehicles.
This show, that nine feet or less lines up with our, now with our definition up top too.
Yeah. And I was just trying to add, make sure everything is consistent with the verbiage. So that's why large was added in a couple of spots and that's everything. So it lines up with the definition and...
Yeah. So nine feet or less and up top, it's in excess of nine feet. So those mesh up well.
Yep. Correct.
That I'm sorry.
Uh, that's much more clear now. I think that that addresses or will, will go towards, um, a lot of the issues that, uh, that they're facing currently at this moment. Um, so it looks like Mario, you didn't make any changes to, uh, to C?
Nope.
Okay. And then, uh, takes us down to section D. So the examples of commercial vehicles. And, uh, so that's where we, we show the chart of the light, uh, light, medium duty vehicles versus large commercial vehicles. Um, Mo, do you have any other questions related to the difference between those, uh, those two examples?
No, that was just very hard to, to clearly see.
Okay. The chart is merely a, to demonstrate. Okay. Um, any, any questions related to section D then? Any comments to it? Rose?
None, none, none.
Okay. Um, Michelle? Michelle, do you have any comments on section D?
No, I don't have any. No.
Okay. Excellent. All right. So it looks like we have a, a much clearer definition and much clearer amendment, uh, to what actually commercial, the description of commercial vehicles, what's allowed, what's not, and, uh, the reason for it and how to help in to clarify what's, what this, uh, what can be parked in, in the, in the driveways and what can't. So I, I guess now it's, uh, maybe some next steps of what you guys think is, is next.
Well, there's just a couple of different ordinances, amendments in the packet that is, uh, that you guys haven't seen yet. They're pretty, uh, brief, but then, uh, in terms of next steps, once we have amendments that you, you guys are appropriate, are comfortable with, we could schedule a public hearing for, at the planning commission before, um, making a recommendation to council.
So I, I guess maybe a question that I have for, uh, for you, Mario, is these changes that we've, that we proposed, um, all the different changes within the ordinance. Um, does that public hearing cover all those changes or is the public hearing only for the commercial vehicles?
It'd be for all of them because every amendment to the ordinance needs to be, uh, go through a public hearing. It can be one public hearing and then you can just, uh, ask and have them addressed, uh, separately during the public hearing. But it, but it would be one bundle and, and it's, it's common to happen, um, uh, you know, a lot of times to, to just go through that process. Cause then it'll be a, uh, just a set of changes that just have to address different, a multitude of topics rather than a set of changes that address one topic.
Okay. All right. And so, uh, if we were to do the, um, uh, so do the public hearing, within that public hearing, do they say, all right, here's the changes to the amendment?
Yes. Uh, so you know, the, all these changes would be available, um, for the public to review. You know, prior to the meeting, they'd be available at, uh, village hall. I'm sure Terry would, uh, be able to, um, get copies of people if they prefer. And then, um, what happens is just during the meeting, you go over them, uh, you know, yelp the public hearing. And then basically the easiest way is usually I could present the individual changes. And then, uh, we can go through them one by one where you open the public hearing, ask for comments and then get people's comments and you close the public hearing on each individual one. Just, uh, and then actually I would, I would defer to Terry as to how she'd like to see the motions for the, those amendments that she felt like she needed to have individual amendments, excuse me, individual motions for each amendment or just one, uh, one motion. It can be done either way.
Okay. All right. Um, just curiosity of how that exactly would, would function. Um, so Mario, if you'll, so basically the, the next, uh, let's say the next change that you made were slight variations to the, um, to the fences?
Yeah. So basically real...
Go ahead.
No, I was gonna say really quick, it just what I noticed that technically because, uh, in paragraph A, uh, during this, in the section, it references specifically just single family residential. Technically there wouldn't be any standards applicable to other zoning districts. So just by striking that lang- that one reference, then we would make sure that all the regulations, um, apply to all zoning districts.
Okay. Um, do we have, uh, Mo, do you have any, uh, comments or questions related to the, uh, to any of the changes in the amendment for the fences?
Is that the clear corner vision, Mario?
That'll be the next thing. This one just, this one will just make sure that our front regulations are applicable on all zoning or zoning districts.
Okay. No, it's clear. That was fine.
Okay.
About the word residential, yeah.
Yep. Rose, you, did you have any, uh, questions or comments to this section?
No.
Okay. Michelle, do you have any questions or comments in this section?
Uh, no.
All right. Okay. So I, uh, I'm, you know, I, I read over it. It seems really clear to me as well. It, it does clean it up. By removing that single family resident, uh, uh, descriptions. Um, so this, I would say that would then take us to the amendment, uh, amendment E, which would be clear vision. Uh, the clear vision area. If you could kind of, uh, Mario, just kind of explain what you're thinking here.
Yep. So right now in the existing ordinance, uh, we, we reference, um, uh, clear vision area, uh, in the general or in the general ordinance applicable to, you know, all things like, uh, walls, fences, landscaping, that sort of thing. And then we also address a, uh, corner vision area in the sign ordinance. Um, in the side, the side ordinance, um, there's a very good graphic that shows what a clear, uh, clear vision area is and where, where they should be applicable. But then one thing of note is that the paragraph, the text currently doesn't reference the graphic specifically in the sign ordinance. And then in the general or in the, in the general section, section six, it, it attempts to, uh, describe with text what a clear vision area is, but then it doesn't have the graphic. So I was thinking just move the graphic to the clear vision area and then just add an extra paragraph, which also, um, does what the graphic intends to do, which is, um, require a clear vision area for driveways too, because it's just as important when, uh, car, vehicles are approaching driveways that they're able to see oncoming traffic. And then, um, just clean up and, and simplify the language in the sign ordinance to just say signs also have to obey the clear vision area. And oh, by the way, those sections are back in section 6.1. So, um, these are things that basically, this is another example of something where we probably already apply it in, in our normal practice of day to day. It's just that technically the language doesn't reference. It isn't consistent with each other. Like I said, the text isn't consistent with the graphics. So I'm just trying to make sure that the text and the graphic are both saying the same thing.
And Justin, this is Joey. I just, uh, I want to ask clarification from Mario. So on this page, we have section 6.1.11 and section 7.4.3. Those are a far distance away from each other in the zoning ordinance. You just put them together here for our benefit, right? So that's why we said that this one is about the clear visionary in general. And the other one is the sign, which is farther back in the ordinance. They don't reside next to each other in the zoning ordinance. So you'll see them in different locations. So we're kind of tackling two areas of the ordinance in one swoop here with this one page.
Yeah. Now I, now I have a better, okay, and better see and understand exactly what's, uh, how you described it now. All right. Yep. Yeah, that, that makes it. Um, Rose, do you have any questions or comments, uh, on, on the clear vision section?
No.
Uh, Michelle?
No.
Are you, uh, Mo?
I'm very good with it.
Okay. So, uh, so overall, um, guys, are you, you happy with the, with the changes that we've, that, uh, um, we've come up with and made to the various different ordinances?
Yes.
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 Okay. Uh, do you think there should be any other additional changes or any other things that we should look at before we, uh, let's say, uh, progress into, into maybe more formalizing this?
There's probably a million, but I can't think of any off the top of my head.
All right. All right. So, uh, so does any, so from here, I'm, I'm, I'm good with everything that's, that's here. I think we've, I think we made some really good changes to it, really clarified, um, and changed, and changing the language and updating the ordinances. I would be open to hear if, if there's any, uh, motions on the table if for, uh, to make this the, uh, make this a motion for the first reading or if anybody else has any motions to, let's say, move forward with.
We'll have to schedule a first reading, correct?
Well, actually because you're the planning... Well, actually, because you're the Planning Commission, you only have one public hearing.
Well, you have to schedule a public hearing, okay?
Yep. You, so you would require, if you, if you feel the language is appropriate, you could make a motion to request a public hearing be scheduled. And then at the public hearing, we'll listen to everyone's comments and then we'll make, and then if you like, if you don't feel there's any additional changes, you can make a recommendation for or against the changes to the council. And that'll be happening at the next meeting. So I think it's just about scheduling the public hearing.
Terry, what's a date that you suggest?
You can't do it until January 5th because you have to notice this not less than 15 days before your next meeting and the 15th, unless you want to meet on the 22nd or 29th, which, you know, I mean, I can't, I can't publish it any sooner to meet that requirement.
My question is actually, is everybody comfortable meeting on the 5th?
Uh, I would, I prefer to push it out to maybe pass the 5th, maybe to the 19th. You know, with the 5th holiday, just give us a little bit to make it preferably around the 19th.
And that, that, that would work also with the moratorium. I do believe it would still, I think, give you time. Do you remember, was the moratorium on the commercial vehicles up in March?
Think so.
I don't.
The council extended it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I wrote it on my whiteboard in my room, but I'm not there right now.
I could go look.
But I, I think.
Why don't we set it? I think it'll be fine.
Yeah, either way.
Is that where, like we're out enforcing that and
No.
getting rid of people's vehicles? So let's go ahead and I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for January 19th.
I'll second that motion.
All right. So we have, we have a motion to request a, so request a public hearing for January the 19th. That was a motion by Mo, correct? And then we had a second from Michelle?
Yes, correct.
Uh, so Madam Secretary, if you please call the, call the vote?
Um, Ballard?
Uh, yes.
Helmuth?
Yes.
McClellan?
Yes.
And Vama?
Yes.
All right. So we'll have a public meeting scheduled for January the 19th.
Mr. Chair, this is Joe. Could I make a mention of something?
Go ahead, Joe.
I was checking in my emails when we were waiting for people to come on tonight. And did you guys get an email from me? I, I show an email going out for the agenda to those people who just wish to have the agenda. But I didn't see an email going out to the planning commissioners. And I'm thinking maybe Gary didn't get notice of the full packet. Did you guys get the packet via email?
Yes, I did.
I did.
Yeah.
Okay. I went back, when we were waiting tonight, I went and checked in my, my sent folder. And I didn't see the one going out with the packet on it for some reason. I thought I even did it in two different emails because of the size of the one, our RC report. Okay.
I had to search for it, yeah.
Joe, who are you looking to see?
Um, Gary Douglas. Cause he, he gave us a couple, a new email a couple of months ago or month and a half ago, two months ago, I think. Um, so he gets, he doesn't get these emails that we send out regarding these meetings, doesn't get just into the thousands of other emails. He gets on that one his head forever. He hasn't.
He's listed on it. Do you want to know what the email is?
Well, yeah, I know what it is. Will, Will Geyer at Gmail.
Yeah, that's the one that it went to.
Okay. I was just, while we were waiting tonight for a quorum to develop, I went and checked. I logged in remotely at my Outlook and I didn't even see that email in my Outbox or, you know, my sent folder. So I was a little puzzled, but it looks like you guys did, did get it. So I was just trying to find Gary or no reason why he, he wasn't here.
I will tell you this, Joe, I did get it. And then for some reason I did lose it. I just had, when I originally got it, I happened to open up the packet. I happened to like download it and save it. So I had it. And then my email went away. I don't know, know where it went. That came from you specifically, but I, but mine disappeared as well. So maybe there was some sort of glitch where it was sent, but then it disappeared somehow. I don't know how it works, but.
Me, I'm either.
I had to search for it. And, you know, I think because Leslie responded onto his email that I couldn't find initially. Usually I can search up and for the Oxford Village, you know, it gives me the, I can search by the email and I couldn't, I had to like go away, go back and find it. So maybe same thing. Like I didn't see his initial email. I saw Leslie's.
I got you.
So, yeah.
No, I was just tossing it out there that that's potentially, Gary might not have gotten it or saw it. Even though we're using his new email, which is only getting to get a couple of things like this, according to him. But anyways, I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay. Thanks, Joe. Uh, all right. So this, now we move on and this takes us to new business. This takes us to the, the MDC, the redevelopment, Redevelopment Ready Communities Report and Process Discussions. So as we, as we get that, this was a, this was something that was, that's sent through us. Correct, Joe?
Yeah. Like I discussed with you earlier today, it's something that the council's going to have on their agenda next week to act on. The DDA has already seen it. Over the next year, we'll be continuing on this process to try to get that certification in place. And it'll include all three of those entities that the DDA, the Village Council and the Planning Commission to some degree. So this was the report we got. It shows how well our current ordinance stacked up and the review in a lot of good areas. You see red and green. That's why I had to print it out in color and send it to you guys. Of course, your packets are still in our office, most of them, but. So it just spoke to that and it explains that process, what we'll be going through over the next year or so to try to bring our best practices into every aspect.
Because it, it does bring advantages to, to, to the community, correct?
Yeah, the DDA is to be eligible for some grants for the downtown area through the MEDC by being part of the RRC program. We, we don't have to be certified in order to be eligible. We're already in the program and progressing because it could be a year or two process perhaps. But as we progress, they're, they're happy to see our progression and we're eligible for some grants.
So it's, it's more of a informational packet that you, that you sent along to us and for us to just to kind of overview and look through.
Yes, correct. So maybe in February, March, as you guys are starting to work on the, the new master plan and things like that and the work plan for 2021, some of the aspects in here will want to be addressed at that same timeframe, a tweak here and a tweak there that just to bring these other scores in line with best practices.
Okay, excellent. Uh, thanks, Joe.
Yep.
Any questions, comments for that?
No.
No.
All right. So, so this brings us now to Point B, the 2021 Planning Commission Meeting Schedule. Don't quite know what that one is. So Joe, if you could maybe help me out with that one?
I'm going to defer to Terry. Terry, put this together because you know, a lot of the input was coming into her and she was getting the package together last year. And with Village Ridge Condos, there was a lot of last minute stuff. And so she's trying to establish some solid timeline, timelines. So we're not scrambling to last minute and throwing together a meeting that falls short. I think it's part of the reasoning behind this. Terry, would you like to expand on that at all?
Uh, well, that basically sums it up in a nutshell. I did run this by Mario to see that, to make sure that he had enough time to respond because what, what often happens is when an app comes in and they see that we have meeting dates, you know, twice a month, for example, January 5th and then on the 19th, they want to get their stuff in right under the wire. They think they have until, you know, right before, up to the meeting to have all of their material into you. And that really is, is a bad way to do business because it doesn't provide us with time to review. Uh, we talked about, and it's on here, an administrative review, which would include maybe a planning commission chairperson or somebody. Um, and it could be Joe or myself and maybe Mario to have an initial eyeball on the items to make sure they're all there because as you know, with Village Ridge, they weren't ready to come before us, probably for the first four, you know, site plans. Mario, I'm not even sure how many we ended up having. It was at least four or five different site plans. It's cost time and money to them. It's, you know, also, oh, it really is a waste of our time and resources too. Cause you guys had other things on your plate that you really wanted to concentrate on, such as the adult use marijuana and some of these other issues. The master plan, you know, you were kind of ready to start last year, this, this current year, 2020. Really didn't have the opportunity because I, I think with this and TKMS was another one. They were not ready to come before the board and they had some extenuating cir, circumstances with timing issues with the streetscape project and getting a foundation in before winter. Um, so in some cases, this is why I put the second meeting as a star as we review and, and set deadlines for these people for site plans in particular to come before us. That, that would give us a little extra time. So, or an extra meeting if we needed to, if they had everything in order and it was a, a possible go for us, it would give us another option. So, um, I basically outlined it with, I highlighted it in yellow for your first meeting to be a, you know, scheduled meeting and the second meeting, almost like a to be determined. It's, it's kind of waiting in the, um, you know, it's, it's, what do you call it? On deck? You're on deck. Um, and then if you go down the columns, you'll see when the plan and the fee are due to us. So if you want to have a, a meeting, a site plan review with the Planning Commission on January 5th, your plan and your fees must be paid and your site plan must be into us by the 10th of December. Uh, the agenda has to be put together. It gives us five days to put an agenda together. So you have pre-notification and Mario gets notice that we have this coming up. Um, so there's an administrative review that if we can get this, these, um, you know, committee together, a couple of people, three people that would like do a preview and say, yeah, this is ready to go forward or turn around and kick it back to the applicant and say, you're missing all of these things you have to have before you, you're not ready. Um, and then of course plans to McKenna. And Mario would do his review and return it to us. So it would give us time to put it in the agenda packet and then get it to the commissioners for review. So there's, you know, a lot of back and forth there. And we were really cutting ourselves short and that's when mistakes happen. Um, you know, we, I, I don't think anybody really enjoyed doing business like that or wanted it to happen that way. And it's, it's just not professional. It's not fair to Mario. He's got other clients. It's not fair to you guys because you all have jobs. So that's, that's the whole purpose of this. And if you have any suggestions or you see anything on there that you, we can tweak it. But this seemed to be a good fit so far for future business.
Would it, or maybe, or maybe you kind of touched on this, like, I know, like for the adult use, we talked about, uh, there's like sort of almost at that checklist. Like they presented, this is what needs to be in, in, so you're saying like they have to have the plan, they have to have the fee, but would, you know, for each thing, then would there be additional? So maybe either a committee, you know, the three-person committee or something you're talking about, either wouldn't have to meet or there's, you know, it gets assigned to somebody each time to like check mark, get they have it or don't like that. Kind of that's what you're saying?
Yes, absolutely. And I, I actually, I think there is some form here with some check, you know, checklist on it. I, and I know I've seen it in other communities. So I can put one together if, if we, if I can't find the one that was used at some point in the past here.
I have one, Terry, in our office from Richfield. It's, we used to call it mini site plan review where our building official would meet with one or two planning commissioners, make sure everything was checked on a site plan before it even went to the full commission.
Yep.
We can implement that as well.
Don't we, so like, like this is great, Terry. I think this is fantastic. It kind of helps us. Uh, it kind of helps us as well understanding the timeframe of what, what it takes to, to, for, for a review or to get things in front of the, the Planning Commission. So it is, is super helpful. But isn't the first gatekeeper essentially those in, inside the office? So basically that checklist. So for example, Valley Ridge, when they submit and so, when they submit or someone submits a plan, there's a specific checklist we're supposed to follow in the office, right? And just because somebody wants a specific date doesn't mean they get a specific date. Meaning that if they don't have everything completed at the check, on the checklist correctly, in the office aspect, it should never move on to, let's say, to the next step. That, is that?
Yeah, technically, yes. Yeah, that's technically correct, but there are odd things that happen, Justin, and things that appear to be okay. But, you know, sometimes when you're reviewing the ordinance, in one section, it looks like it might be okay. But there is something that refers even more, um, in, in more detail, like tonight when they were, we were doing the amendment on the, the clear sight vision. One had to do with signs. It's, it's farther back in the ordinance. The other one is in a different section. So you can't expect the staff here to know the ordinance is that well. I mean, we know them a little bit. Um, but, and we, we would have to review and look at those things. And we often do have check with McKenna and say, hey, you know, somebody wants to do this. Can they do it? Oh, no, they can't do that. They have to get a special use for a sign. You know, because it's going to be lit or something else. So, um, yes, and this, this, um, schedule actually is more for the staff so that they know when somebody comes in and submits an application, they can speak intelligently to an applicant and say, well, if you have a site plan, I must have your plans and your fee by this date. Um, and that's the, the very beginning. Nothing happens until that site plan is submitted. So and trust me, a lot of these people, developers and stuff, they know what they're supposed to do and submit. And they try and cut corners all the time, or they think it's just not important, or maybe, you know, some planning commissions are not as astute as others. So, you know, they just think it's going to get rubber stamped and moved on. So, um, they know what they're supposed to have and they, you know, try and outsmart you in some ways. But this at, at least gives everybody a lineup. The published date is on there. So you know, hey, if I've got, if I have to send out notices to everybody within 300 feet of a property, I have to do it by December 16th to, in order to legally have that meeting. So it is an internal checklist as well as good for a reference for you and something that we can all use to, you know, keep us on track.
Yeah, it is, it is. Thank you for that, Terry. It is, it will be really helpful. At least for me, it will be. All right. Thank you. All right.
Hey, is there another question?
Go ahead, Mo.
Terry, don't we usually adopt our meeting schedule every year?
Yeah, that's on your, the December council agenda. It's on the, no, December 8th, next Tuesday. All of the boards and commissions are on a, a one-page, um, easy to review calendar with all the dates for the meetings. And that will be presented to the council on Tuesday, December 8th.
Before we get to the council, maybe the planning commission should look at this. Do we want to meet on January 5th? Right after the holidays?
Oh, well, you know, yeah, these are your normally scheduled dates, but you don't have to meet on those. They can be canceled for, you know, for reasons of a lack of a quorum. Because, you know, or if it's, I see what you're saying, Mo. We can scrap that and say to be determined because of the date. When we haven't received anything, what's, um, a plan or a fee would have to be due by the 10th of this month anyway, which is next Tuesday. I don't see anything coming. Nothing's on the horizon. We haven't gotten any calls or anything like that. So I don't even think it's. I don't see anything coming. Nothing's on the horizon. We haven't gotten any calls or anything like that. So I don't even think it's going to be an issue. But yeah, we, we could put some of them as to be determined if you think, um, I don't know. You also have one in July that's, that's right after the fourth of July. I don't know if that would be a, a.
Well, does anyone know what it used to have? I mean, I always get to have to look at this, like whatever how, like September seventh, that's the day after Labor Day. Um, do you want to meet on September seventh, the day after Labor Day?
Again, again, that's kind of why the second meeting date is there because it can be a fallback date um, for you, Maureen. Because somebody, in the past, you have met, the, the board has met on these particular dates. It's because they don't, they don't fall directly on a holiday. So that's another purpose um, uh, for the meeting fallback date. Because you guys can say, yeah, you know, I just think it would be best if we pushed our business back this month and take that second meeting date. So.
Hey, Mo, this is Joe.
Yeah.
Are you contemplating, Mo, thinking, why send, maybe you want to pick a couple of these dates off and not even send them up on, on the, on the schedule that's going to be approved next week?
Well, absolutely. If we know we don't want to meet on January fifth, why bother publishing it?
Right. Now, we're December 21st, which is a Tuesday, New Year, Christmas Eve is Friday. Um, again, we'll be open and it's possible to meet, but is it what you guys want to do?
Well, I also have to, just, just one more thing for your consideration is that you have had your meetings on the first and third Tuesday. Everybody knows, public knows, everybody knows. First and third Tuesday is planning commission. Second and fourth Tuesday is council. So it, it's in keeping with that. And then, of course, you can, you know, scrap or be a, put on a to be determined. But it's, it, it's kind of ingrained in everybody's mind that these are the dates that are reserved for all of, you have so many boards and commissions and everybody's got their Wednesday and their Tuesday and their Monday and their, um, so that's the lineup.
You and these words metaphors, Terry. What's going on?
Be a team player, Mo, come on.
I'm a little afraid.
Whatever you want to do, I can change this. I can fix it, but we needed something to start. We need a starting point.
You know, I, I think it's. I think it's, I think it's, I think it's really good. It gives, it's a, it's a great guideline. It's a great thing to, that we can go by. And I, we're not going to meet every one of those days. There might not be anything going on, but it just gives us something to work with or something to, like, an idea of, hey, look it, if you wanted to have a meeting at this date, these are the things that you have to do. So I, I think it's, I think it's really good. Thanks, Terry.
Sure.
All right. Um, all right. So I, I guess now it takes us, if, if nobody has any more questions related to that or comments. Um, then, uh, let's take it to the, uh, let's take it to item number nine, public comment up there. Does it, Joe, it doesn't look.
I don't see any.
All right.
We're all here.
All right. So there's, there's no public com- uh, comment. Um, any, uh, so yeah, so it takes us down to consultant. Maybe one question I do have is uh, at the Mario, this one's actually for Mario, is that um, uh, we always do an end of year review. Do you have any idea of what, what that, if we're looking at doing that or when we're looking at doing the year end review?
Uh, yes, that's actually something that um, I was just gonna ask in my report. Uh, we can either do that next meeting. So I could have a report ready for you for uh, I believe that's the fifteenth, is that right? Or um, and I would, Terry, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that'd be the only thing on your agenda, just doing that annual report, um, going over it. Or uh, we could do that on January fifth. I know we just talked about maybe not meeting that day. But I'd be able to get the report done and ready for your review um, at whichever meeting you prefer.
Um, I guess it's. So let's see. Um, so what were the dates that you set for that?
I can have it ready for next meeting, so December fifth, fifteenth.
Okay. Uh, does anybody, uh, does anyone have um, concerns with that? Mo?
No concerns.
Going over the year, would you prefer the fifteenth or the fifth?
Let's, we should probably do it as late as possible. So we're doing it for the whole year.
Well, then, you could do it on the nineteenth as well. If, if it's just a year review, it's not going to change what's happened. Um, it's just a formality of saying, here's where, here's what we accomplished. So it's, it's up to you, but you, you said you didn't want to meet on the fifth. If you want the fifteenth, it's two weeks or January nineteenth, it could be.
So I mean, we, we could add it to the nineteenth. Uh, we could add to the nineteenth and uh, because we have the public hearing and then as, as right this minute, and then we can just do two things in one.
Go ahead. Well, I was just gonna say, on the agenda, we'll have the election of officers will be the first meeting next year too. So that'll probably fall on the nineteenth.
The election of officers?
Yes.
Uh, is that for the new addition for like a replacement of um, of Jack?
Well, by then you should have um, at least the township person established. Whether we have a replacement for Rose is to be determined. Um, but you'll have five or six, perhaps, maybe seven members by then. Um, but either way, that's the time you'll do your election of officers.
Do I have to stay on until you, you, you get somebody else?
I gotta go back and look at that role. I know in some cases that, I know in the DDA, that's the case. Um, I'd have to go back and check the Planning Enabling Act to see about that one.
Okay.
I don't think so. I think as long as you guys have a minimum quorum, then I think you're okay. But yeah, Joe, it doesn't hurt to double check.
Yeah, I don't think it does either with the planning commission and zoning board. Um, I know in the DDA, they stay until the replacement is in place. Uh, but I'll double check on that one.
Uh, where do you find that at, uh, Joe?
The Michigan Planning Enabling Act. It's a public act from oh three, I think. And then there's Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. There was like oh three and oh six, I think that they were put out. It talks about the board makeups, um, rules, terms of office, things like that.
Okay. All right. So uh, so we either have uh, December the fifteenth, January the fifth or the nineteenth. So. Yes, we, we just have to decide which one we want.
And we know we're meeting on the nineteenth based on the information tonight for the public hearing that we have to post.
Yep. Uh, I just don't remember how long that review took uh, last time, uh, last year.
Take any time.
What's that?
It's really fast. It doesn't take any time at all.
Okay. Well, let's add it to the nineteenth then. If everybody's okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, excellent. So uh, if we could, uh, Mario, if we could add that year end review. That'll help give you uh, more time.
Sure, okay.
If you're okay with that as well.
That'll work.
All right. So do we have any more uh, administration comments? Consultant comments, administration comments?
No, I think we've covered most things.
All right. Uh, so that brings us down to, now to commissioner comments. Uh, Oxford Township uh, planning commission update. Uh, Jack's not there, not here to be able to do that. So we will, uh, we'll pass on that. Uh, Rose, anything on the ZBA?
No.
Okay. And then I don't think Pete's online or anything for the DDA. So uh, it looks like no, no updates on the DDA. And if uh, nobody has anything else.
Hey, Justin.
Uh, yes, Joe.
This is Joe. Um, I attended DDA meetings. Um, so because Pete's not here, the only thing I want to bring up is um, the DDA is uh, spending quite a bit more money this year. And I think it was today slash tomorrow, the tree in Sentinel Park is getting uh, tree lights installed, a new vendor this year. And it's, I believe it's going to be much brighter and greater than it has been in the past. So look for that. Uh, and that's a DDA event. The DDA is working on um, sound systems for the downtown. We got a repeater. Uh, one of our things, units in today or a couple of days ago, we had to check the downtown for radio frequency interference. There are speakers that'll be mounted on the light poles to provide background music in the downtown four block area. It's the same system if you've been in downtown Holly that they use over there. Um, it's gonna be, we're gonna remotely, we're gonna install antennas up on top of the museum building. There'll be a laptop in the museum that we can get to remotely to change the music and stuff in the downtown area. That's underway. Those are just a couple of things that DDA is working on lately.
Okay, that's actually pretty interesting.
Is it?
I, it is kind of cool. I'm kind of excited to see like, uh, like I, I was laughing. I was laughing because if the speakers get accidentally hijacked one day and somebody takes control of the microphone and starts talking into it, and the whole downtown can hear it.
Well, it is set to do that too. And they're gonna put a repeater down in Sentinel Park in case they're having an event down there where they may be able to speak there and have it broadcast throughout those other speakers for some type of event.
I think it's pretty neat. All right.
I love you, Justin.
I think it's neat, Mo, so hey.
Maybe Justin has something to say for everyone. Just wants to wish everybody Merry Christmas or something.
There we go. All right, guys. Uh, so now it takes, we go down to, do I have an motion to adjourn?
I moved at eight eleven.
Uh, so, well, we've got to do it. Uh, Mo's got the uh, motion to adjourn. Somebody have a second?
A second.
All right. Thanks, Rose. There you go. Uh, so, Secretary, if you call the uh, the role, please?
Um, McQuellen? Oh, it might already be. Bama?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I'm here. Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Hollis?
Yes.
Um, Douglas and Pylecker are still absent. So Merry Christmas, everyone.
Yeah, nice seeing you guys. Have a good holiday.
Merry Christmas.
Bye.
Talk to you after the new year.
Good one. Thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.